Appreciate it. First thing, as always, on the agenda is we do need to take a roll call on determination of a quorum. If you would please, Amber.
Wa.
Here.
Martenson.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
LaCroy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Haddock. We have a quorum.
Very good. Reminder of everyone in the audience, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're two year left, our right. They're over on the media table. If you'd please fill that out, put your name, and that way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. I'd ask everyone to please rise, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, this is a special city council meeting, so the only thing that we can deal with are issues that are on our agenda. And we have nine items on our agenda. With that, the first thing is, we will ask staff to actually give the presentation that was given at Planning Commission, so that the city council can have the benefit of seeing the same information that was provided to the planning commissioners. With that, Vicky Fisher, if you go ahead and start your presentation.
Four comprehensive plan amendment requests, and four rezoning requests to change portions of the property to allow general commercial zoning with a planned commercial development, and an initial planned commercial development application that was approved by the Planning Commission and appealed by the public to this meeting today. This shows you in yellow the boundary of the initial planned commercial development. It includes 30.14 acres. To the north, you see Fifth Street. To the south, you see East Stuma Road. Black Hills Boulevard intersects with Stuma Road. It is then bordered along the south by Katrin Boulevard. The current zoning of the property identifies that the bulk of the area is currently zoned general commercial with a planned development designation. On your agenda this evening, you will see Items One, that is coupled up with Item Number Six, and that is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone application to rezone .34 acres from office commercial with a planned development designation to general commercial with a planned commercial development, excuse me. That originally came in as a 1.18 acre proposal. The applicants then moved the building approximately 95 feet to the east and 20 feet to the south, and in doing so, they reduced the size of the request within this portion of the property. On your agenda, you will see that there is a revised legal description that came out of the Planning Commission, limiting that acreage to .34 acres. The next two items would be Items Two and Five on your agenda, and this is to go from office commercial with a planned commercial development to general commercial with a planned commercial development. Again, that proposal is .235 acres. The next two items, you'll see those as Items Three and Seven, includes .686 acres, and that is to go from public to general commercial with a planned commercial development. The last two rezoning plan applications are Items Four and Eight on your agenda, and that is to rezone 1.123 acres from general commercial with a planned commercial development to public. And the reason for these rezones, especially within this area, is because as they designed out the drainage, they identified that in lieu of coming through in the blue area, which was identified as public, to secure that drainage improvement, it's actually going to come a little bit further to the north. In addition, they need to expand the detention facility that's there along Fifth Street to accommodate the drainage from this development. So the intent is to rezone that to public to address that drainage. The plan originally identified that everything south of the drainage area should be general commercial with a planned commercial development, and as such, they're requesting that those two slivers be rezoned accordingly. The Future Land Use Committee submitted a recommendation to the Planning Commission identifying that, based on the small sizes of the parcels being proposed to be rezoned to general commercial with a planned commercial development, that it appeared to be appropriate in conjunction with the initial planned commercial development to ensure that those uses that were being brought into those areas were limited. In particular, this area is being identified for an access aisle and landscaping. These areas here would be landscaping and parking, and then, of course, this would be actually drainage. So there's no structural development being proposed within any of those areas. It's important to note that when the Planning Commission recommended approval of all eight of those items, they did so in conjunction with each other. All of the comp plans are being approved in conjunction with the rezones and the initial planned development. It was identified that that planned development needed to be the tool to be used to mitigate and ensure that landscaping, buffering, noise, outer traffic, lighting, parking, drainage, and internal circulation was being adequately addressed for this proposed use in this area due to the overall zonings of the area and the adjacent properties. This is the site plan that was submitted as a part of the initial planned commercial development. You'll see in this area 157,000, 54,750 square foot Walmart superstore. It also includes an outdoor garden area. There are two mini anchor stores being proposed, a 30,900 square foot building and a 16,000 square foot building. Phase one would include the Walmart proposal. Phase two would include the two mini anchors. They are also proposing as a part of phase one to improve the drainage improvements. When we looked at this overall plan, we noticed that they were identifying a road connection between Black Hills Boulevard and Stuma Road. I just wanted to go on record that the Planning Commission concurred with staff's concern that that would create cut-through traffic, and we put the developer on notice that when this proposal comes forward with the final planned commercial development or plating, that we wanted to see an alternate access to these outlots, that that would create issues that would be difficult to address. The elevations were initially submitted at a special Planning Commission meeting April 8th. Subsequently, they were revised and brought back before the Planning Commission at their last meeting. And these are the revised elevations that were submitted, reviewed, and approved by the Planning Commission. Please note that there are numerous cultured stone columns and pop-outs to give that three-dimensional look. In particular, there was some precast concrete within this area that was a large spans, and they did include some additional columns within that area. The colors that they chose, they went around and they looked at some of the existing homes in the area, and the color scheme does seem to match the homes that are currently there. One of the items that we noted at Planning Commission and they concurred with is that this is like a false storefront, and it doesn't appear to be in character with the balance of the building. And one of the stipulations, I think you'll find that stipulation number nine, recommends that they come back as part of the final and eliminate that archway. Maybe some additional columns or some other cultured stone amenities in that area. The top elevation is looking at the front of the building. That's the side that faces west. The bottom elevation is looking at the back of the building. That's the side that faces, excuse me, the front one faces east, the bottom one faces west. I'd like to pull, bring to your attention that that is the truck loading area, and they are putting up a wall to buffer that loading dock area from the neighborhood to the west. And we did ask for some additional column amenities within that area, and they did submit those. This, the top one, is the north elevation. This is the pharmacy drive-through. This is the large compactor that will be used. During the Planning Commission meeting, it was identified that that compactor needed to be screened. It's kind of open right now, and we wanted to see that screened so that those properties to the north wouldn't be looking at that. Again, the south elevation, this is the side that you would see from Stuma Road. We noted that the doors should be more brown in color, similar to what we have over here, so that it blends in better with the building and doesn't have that glare aspect. The architect for Walmart was at that meeting, Larry Webb. He identified during the meeting that all of the conditions stipulated in the staff report to revise those elevations, that they were on board with that. So we will be looking forward to those coming forward with the final commercial development plan. Part of the discussions at the Planning Commission was for the applicant to bring forward line of sight drawings to show the neighborhood what this store would look like from their neighborhood. So these pictures are taken at eye level, and the location of this first one is at the intersection of Enchantment, Pines Drive, and Enchanted Road. And all you will see is the house, but the neighborhood was concerned about that, and they asked for that line of sight, and so the applicant brought it in. The Planning Commission also asked the applicant, as this item came forward, to duplicate the line of sight drawings, to show the first set with landscaping at its initial planting, and then come back and show it again when it was mature. So the first ones we're going to look at show the landscaping when it's initially planted. Line of sight one is coming from Enchantment Road over to the southwest corner of the building. Line of sight two is coming in a little bit further to the north, and as you can see, that building is very visible to those adjacent properties. Again, coming a little bit higher along Savoy Circle, and higher again, this would be three, and this would be four, higher again from Savoy Circle. This one is coming even higher on Savoy, and you can see that all of a sudden you can start to view the entire north side of the building as well. Line of sight number six, again, a little bit higher still on that circle drive. This picture to the top is coming from Fifth Street, looking down to the north side of the building, again, highly visible. And the last one is looking in from Katrin Boulevard. And what we noticed when this elevation was presented to us is that that roof is highly visible. And so you will see in the stipulations of approval that came forward out of Planning Commission, that they are asking for additional screening along that rooftop, and that the color of the roof membrane be such to reduce glare to the greatest degree possible. Again, the architect did indicate that he would be bringing that forward as a part of the final. This is the same elevation we just looked at, but with mature landscaping. And as you can see, looking in on Enchantment Road One and Enchantment Road Two, that landscaping makes a big difference. It really breaks up the building and it adds that buffer that we've been looking for. Again, a little bit higher up on Savoy Circle, and the landscaping, again, breaks up that building, and it is burned landscaping, so it does add even another element. Again, higher still on Savoy Circle, five and six. And then this is looking from Fifth Street down, a big difference with the landscaping in place, and again, looking in from Katrin Boulevard. What we indicated with the applicant and what Planning Commission concurred to, and you'll note in your stipulations, is that in stipulation number 34, it specifically states that the landscaping along the north and the west side of the building should be brought in at a larger caliber than what would otherwise be required by the landscape ordinance. In particular, the landscaping within this area, in lieu of being four foot for an evergreen tree, and one and a half inch caliber for a deciduous tree, that they be brought in at six foot minimum for an evergreen tree, and three inch caliber for a deciduous tree, that they be irrigated to, again, promote that fast growth, and that a soils analysis be submitted as a part of the final planned commercial development. And that was actually offered up by the applicants to justify and verify that the species that are being proposed will actually grow within the soils within this area. They also submitted a drawing showing the night sky, and the bottom drawing is coming again from Savoy Circle, probably one of the more highly visible areas into the building. And as you can see, based on this drawing, it would have limited impact. The design is such that the lights are capped down. They did submit a photometric plan, and what you see here, shown in yellow, is the scope of where that, the proposed lighting within the parking lot would reflect. And what I am outlining is the property boundary. Our ordinance says that all lighting must reflect inside the properties and not on those adjacent properties, and as such, there is a stipulation of approval, you'll note it being stipulation number seven, that says that as a part of a final commercial development plan, that a revised photometric plan be submitted for review and approval, and that it revised the lighting as needed to ensure that all lighting reflect within the boundaries of the property itself. This is an elevation of the proposed lighting within the parking lot. You can see they've got the dual lights on the one pole. They'll range in height from 42 foot to 30 foot. There'll be a flat lens with a full cutoff, again, to ensure that that night sky is preserved and that the lighting shines down and not out. The applicant also indicated that he would be bringing forward a decorative light along Stuma Road, something different than the typical streetlight that we would see in Rapid City. This is the elevation of what they're proposing. It's a metal light. Again, it's got the dual lights. It's black in color. We've noted that, and you'll note this is a stipulation of approval, that the applicant enter into a covenant agreement to provide and maintain those streetlights along Stuma Road as a part of this development. Discussion with the public also addressed a concern with pedestrian access, noting that due to the residential development in the area, we wanted to ensure that those who wanted to walk to the store had a safe ingress and egress. Currently, there are sidewalks along Stuma Road on both sides, and the applicant has submitted this plan identifying that a sidewalk will tie into the Stuma Road sidewalks along one side of the shared access between the two properties, this being Walmart, this being the mini anchors. There'll be crosswalks in place, and then there will be a sidewalk that will run right down the middle of the parking lot in what's being proposed as a landscape boulevard. Now, this landscape boulevard measures 28 feet in width, and it doesn't replace any of the landscape islands. They are still meeting that requirement, too. This is somewhat unique, and we've had other big boxes propose this, but this is the first one that we've actually seen bring in a plan for it, that are showing us that to try and break up the parking lot, they're proposing that larger spans of landscaping, again, this being 28 feet in width, and it made for a good avenue for that pedestrian access to be provided. So that gives us connectivity back and forth from Stuma up into both developments and between the developments itself. Again, looking at the site plan, there was also bike racks that are being proposed in front of the Walmart store and along the side of the mini anchor stores. You'll see stipulations of approval that is a part of the final development plan. We'd like to see the actual design of those to ensure that those that want to bike to the site have a safe and secure place to lock those bikes down. Some exceptions were asked as a part of this, and one of them was to the loading area in the back of the Walmart store. In particular, based on the size of the store, it's required that there be eight loading lanes, and that each lane be a minimum of 12 feet. They are requesting that the lanes be reduced from eight foot to four foot, and that the lanes be reduced in size from 12 foot to 10 foot. They've also submitted a truck delivery plan showing that the trucks on the site are not allowed to idle more than three minutes per truck, and that the truck numbers will be limited to have those schedules lined up so that those four loading areas will suffice for their deliveries. And as far as the 10 or 12 foot lanes go for, the width, their truck drivers obviously have been maneuvering through those for some time. I'd like to point out, this is similar to what you did with the Sam's Club site. The city did approve, reduced numbers of lanes and widths of lanes for that site, and it appears to be a tried and true design schematic for the Walmart and Sam's Club's development. Another exception that was requested was to the detention facility. It's required that they provide a maximum four-to-one slope on that detention facility. They're requesting to provide it at a three-to-one slope. In reviewing this and noting that this drainage facility will capture development flows, we concur with their request to seek that exception contingent upon them taking ownership of the facility and maintaining that facility. One of the stipulations of approval of the initial planned development stipulates that when this mini anchor store lot is platted, that that detention facility be platted into that parcel to ensure that they continually own it and maintain it, that it doesn't go back to the city on a tax roll. As a part of the discussion at Planning Commission, staff was directed to meet with some of the neighbors to the west to review options on limiting or precluding traffic along the west leg of Stuma Road between Black Hills Boulevard and Enchantment Road. We looked at about eight different options that utilized different design schematics along the street. The one that the neighborhood concurred with was the one that's before you today. This is known as Concept G, and it's the only one that truly closes off the traffic yet gives the emergency responders access through it in cases of an emergency. In particular, what the design you see before you right now includes are three bollards along the north lane, and that would be the westbound lane of Stuma Road. There will also be road closed signs posted at that location. There will be three bollards on the eastbound lane of Stuma Road. What that will allow, though, and again, road closed signs, what that will allow, though, is an emergency responder to come through in opposing lanes as needed in case there was a 911 emergency to the site. This particular design schematic also includes a pork chop design at the intersection of the Eagle Ridge Apartments. They will still maintain their full access off of Black Hills Boulevard. This will still allow them to come into the site, but when they're leaving the site with this pork chop design, they will be forced to go right and not left. Finally, the last concept as a part of Concept G is the turnaround, and that was something that the applicants brought forward as a part of their proposal. We had a traffic impact study reviewed several times by staff, and you will note that in stipulation number 19, it's quite long, and what we've done is gone through the recommendation of their traffic engineer and noted as a stipulation of approval all of the items that must be addressed in order for this project to come forward. They include turn lanes and a signal at the intersection of Stuma Road and Fifth Street, additional turn lanes, and a signal at Black Hills Boulevard and Katrin Boulevard. That also included the roundabout at the intersection of Stuma and Black Hills Boulevard, and of course, there were some revisions to the intersection of Fifth and Katrin Boulevard. We noted that as a part of what the Planning Commission approved, it actually listed those so that there would be no doubt in the future as to what would be expected as a part of this development. It's important to note that this is just an initial planned commercial development application, and what we've had presented to us does exceed the requirements for the initial planned commercial development. But based on the sensitivity of this project and the location of this site, the applicant has submitted additional information. You'll note that the stipulations of approval brought forward to you by the Planning Commission include 42 items, in an attempt to ensure that we haven't missed anything and that the applicant is aware what needs to be brought forward as a part of that final planned commercial development. In summary, I would just like to note that on the agenda today are the four rezones and comp plan amendments. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of all eight of those items contingent upon the initial planned commercial development being approved with it. The initial planned commercial development is on your agenda today with the recommendation from Planning Commission to approve contingent upon the associated rezones and comprehensive plan amendments being approved and upon the effective date of the rezoning applications. So with that, that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Vicky. At this point, we will go ahead and take a motion to open the public comment.
Some more.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are in the public comment period. Since this is a special council meeting, unless there's any objection from the council, I don't plan on timing this. Typically, during council meetings, we time it to three minutes, and to be honest with you, that's very short. So what we would ask you to do is, we will not time anything tonight. We will give you an opportunity to speak, but there again, we just ask that you be succinct and direct. And with that, I do have a speaker request form from Sean White, from Crawford. Must be butte.
I'll wait till questions. I'm just here for...
Okay, very good. Next is Mr. Robert Green.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I reside at Two Sun Swept Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. First of all, I wanted to thank staff for their comprehensive report. I think I'd be redundant to try to repeat all that, and I appreciate their efforts. You know, I thought about what I might say before council tonight. What I did was think back on all the trips that I've made to Rapid City in the last six to eight months. And one of those trips while I came to Rapid City was to visit Mount Rushmore, probably one of the most substantial areas in the Black Hills region. And despite, it really is a very impressive site, so I must commend Rapid City for being part of the region and the tourism and everything that comes from Mount Rushmore, as well as the Badlands and up north, the Sturgis. It really is a very impressive community, so we're looking forward to being a part of it. One of the things that I grabbed from my visit a couple of weeks ago to the site was to take a look at the monuments out there and really look at the history. And if you look at the history of Mount Rushmore, you have Dwayne Robinson, Gustaf Borglum, and the state senator, excuse me, check my notes. Peter Norberg. And what really impressed me was that these gentlemen, they had a vision. They had a vision for what Mount Rushmore and the community could become. And why do I tell you this story? I tell you this story because we have a vision, too, and we have a vision for what this project could be. We'd like to see the South Robbinsdale community grow. We'd like to see this to be the finest development in Rapid City. And I believe we've put together a product that the entire council, as well as the community, would be happy with when we complete the project. Now, one of the things that you struggle with as a developer is moving and advancing your project along. And tonight is one of those nights that we come before the council and ask for the project to move along. We're here as the presenter, you here, you folks, council member, councilwoman. You're the decider. You make the decision as to whether or not we need to advance our plans. So as Vicky discussed in her presentation, we've come to the table with landscaping plans, lighting plans, as well as numerous submittals, and really a objective to achieve the best project we could do. So it's important to try to go back into some history here and understand how we, and Vicky did touch on this, how we did get to the project as it sits today. So when we first took a look at this project at this location, Anchor Retail was aligned something like that. And through various meetings, inputs, not only from the civil engineer, but also meetings with the neighborhood, we didn't believe that this was going to be an orientation that would work. So we elected, not because it's easy to avoid doing that. We didn't want this building right here with the service area to be a view corridor from Fifth Street. Because all of that activity can happen back here, there's a difference in elevation at this point of approximately 18 feet to road grade. You effectively take any of the service areas out of the visibility of the neighbors from Savoys to the west and the northwest. Vicky mentioned about the landscaping that we would have here. Well, we believe it's over and above what the city ordinance would require, and we are most interested in this area over here to protect our neighbors in this location. Also this location, but you'll notice if you take a close look at the plans, this is almost 1,000 feet away. The closest neighbors here are to the corner of the building approximately 250 feet. So we're not on top of every single residence out here, but we do have their concerns in mind. And as Vicky mentioned earlier, we did adjust the building, moving it to the east, as well as moving it to the south 20 feet, to try to further mitigate any spillage of sound or light into the areas over here. or light into the areas over here. And you effectively do that by using the building itself as a barricade. Now, if you'll give me a moment here, I'll try to go to my next screen. And I apologize for the clarity of this picture, but essentially, and Vicki mentioned this, and this sort of lays into what the rezonings accomplish. The existing drainage out there today, this is a existing condition plan, flows in this line. The rezone that we're asking for, so the zoning that was done originally was something like that, and I apologize for, I didn't pass kindergarten and trying to draw straight lines, so. This area here doesn't fall within the existing drainage way. So we're asking for this area, which is identified as rezone number one and number two. Apologize, I'm getting a little. Two and three are in this area, as she clearly stated. The third, the first area that she discussed is about three quarters of, excuse me, 3.34 acres right in through here. Now, we wanted to make sure we took the building out of the general commercial. So just the drive aisle shows in that area, item number one. One, two, three, not to confuse. That public area is right here, approximately an acre, 1.2 acres. So that really should help identify how our design was assembled. It was the subject of a site orientation meeting that we had on April 6th out at the site. You'll see that this area here gets elevated approximately 12 feet. This area here has fall from Stumer Road approximately 18 feet. And we believe when you do a design of this nature, it serves everyone. The view corridor is from Fifth. The view corridor is from the intersection of 16 and Fifth. This view corridor here will use some screening through here to best manage the RTUs. There's a thousand foot of distance here. We talked about the parapet elevations on the front of the building that would be seen from the back in the current orientation and design right now. Those would use the tan roofing that was suggested by staff to mitigate any glaring effect. And then we achieved the project that I think everyone is looking for us to do. Just going to move a couple of, through a couple of other details that I had to show for you. We've taken a number of different elements in our shopping centers and tried to advance the designs over the course of the last 20 years. THF has been a developer across the country. We're in approximately 20 to 22 states with 20 million square feet of retail, and we tried to advance those designs to be customer friendly, as well as aesthetically appearing. This is a shopping center we did a couple of years ago outside St. Louis with a large retaining wall and a signage. We're not proposing any signage of this type here, but just some of the elements and styles that you can do. This is a shopping center we have in Chesterfield, Missouri, where the entry feature is the gathering place for the entrance to the shopping center. It's a, we tried to include or incorporate that design into our roundabout as a gateway for both the residential and retail. This is a better profile picture of the same entrance. Again, I apologize for the poor picture. This is an example of some of the lighting that we've done. We worked on a project. This was a private project where we put some lighting along the street at the entrance to a community center. We take those similar features into the projects that we would do. This is a picture that Vicki described on the profile. She showed it in her presentation. This is an actual real picture of the type of product that we would propose to do along Stumer. This is just a drawn back, better picture with the median and the lighting that we would propose to take through here. Now, I made note at the Planning Commission, we're not proposing to do banners or anything like that, but it's just to carry the lights onto the street and soften up the project. It's just, I'm currently working on developing signage for the shopping center, and we'd like to have a little more advanced sign in terms of its design and taste, bringing in some of the elements on the bottom of the sign. Although I could rotate this picture, you want to try to use the same complimentary features from your building as you would use on the legs of any type of signage. That might be a little better. Again, this is a shopping center identification sign at one of our developments out in Colorado, Brighton, Colorado. This one is in Firestone, Colorado. Again, I apologize, this one's not finished, sort of. What we're trying, what I'm trying to show you is we have advanced designs. It's not the boring, typical box sign that we would do. We'd also like to, in development with that, we'd like to discourage multiple pole signs throughout the project. We don't believe that wins cosmetically, and as I work through that with staff, I'm sure we'll be coming together again to look at the ordinances that can be crafted to best serve this development and this part of the community. We also have a number of standards that go above and beyond what typical municipal standards are, and we would try to take those standards into the cities that we move into. So I attached our typical development standards without all the detail, stuff like canopy lights and all the way down the line to painting transformers behind the back of your building. I think one of the things that you take a look at, if you, and this did come up, if you take a look at this drawing. I think the most critical area that we're going to address with our submittal of the final development plan, well, how will we handle the backside of this building? We want to handle it similarly, the way that we handled the major anchor. But in this case, you really end up with a two-sided building here, one that fronts Fifth Street and one that fronts Stumer and Catron. So you need to take into account, as you design that building, how it looks. We typically do that by painting, coloring, stone accents. You want to do enclosures that usually are in masonry, so you can avoid trash and the unsightliness, as well as enhance, you could see potentially enhanced landscaping around the masonry unit, because we understand this right here is a gateway to Rapid City as well. We have no designs or intentions to bring a mini-box at this time. That is a business transaction that would take place and coordinate with the mini-box, so I don't plan to bring that at the final development plan should we get there. What I really want to impress upon the city council is that we'd like to move forward with our project. We believe we have a vision for this area, and we hope that we can advance and further coordinate our activities, both with staff, the city council, Planning Commission, as well as our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We also have a speaker request form from Mark Stolkin. Hope I got that right, Mr. Stolkin. There again, if you'd just come forward and identify yourself for the record, then the floor will be yours, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Stolkin. I live at 307 Enchantment Road. You're close. I really don't have much more to say. I, you know, I've expressed this a couple of times, you know, what we think about Walmart in general, but I was really just here to, I guess, my support for the closure of Stumer. I'm not sure if that's an issue with anybody else on the city council, or if they're going to have more questions about that, but I'd like to address that later if somebody has more questions about it. But the importance to me, I mean, obviously, I live right at the corner of Enchantment and Stumer. It's just, you know, we've talked about this before with, we have these, I was also here for Eagle Ridge Apartments that are directly behind our houses. Just the fact that those apartment buildings already bring quite a bit of traffic that comes by and through the neighborhood, just the amount of traffic and extra everything else with the 24-hour box store that comes along with this is really important for us to see that closed and enforced and possibly have a little bit more assurance from the city council that maybe that would be a permanent thing rather than, because actually, how it looks, there's about, you know, the posts wherever they put in the street could easily be taken out if there's complaints or something like that. We just, I know my neighbor Jay Alderman, he wasn't able to be here today, but he would probably express the same thing, is that we like some, we're not sure if there's any sort of assurance or anything else that could be, any stipulations that could be put on that condition to say that there's some sort of, that it is permanent, or at least permanent for the time, you know, for a certain time period until it can be properly evaluated if it were to be removed. Just take that in consideration. So that's all I, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Gina Nelson. There again, if you do me a favor and just identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, ma'am.
I'm Gina Nelson. I live over on the west side of town, and, you know, right now, Claire West, out by Arrowhead Country Club in that area, I guess. Right now, I've got really pretty easy access, thanks to Catron Boulevard, to the hospital, and we can be there in 10 minutes. And I do have concerns about traffic and added stoplights to handle the traffic and that kind of stuff, blocking that access to the hospital. We've made four trips in the last year to the emergency room. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from Dan Baker.
Good evening, Alderman and women and Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to read some testimony from Charity Doyle into the record. She's not here tonight, and I'd like to read some inserts of that. Says, "Dear Alderman and Mayor Hanks..."
Mr. Baker, just there again, my apologies, I missed, I forgot to remind you, if you could just please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Dan Baker. I live at 325 Stumer, Rapid City.
Thank you so much. Please continue.
I'm unable to attend the Rapid City Council meeting tonight, but here are some of my thoughts. First, let it be known that I'm not against a second Rapid City Walmart. My main objective in the following arguments is for the city to retain its integrity by following the city's comprehensive plan. There are several indicators that deem this project unsuitable for the proposed area. The comprehensive plan is what residents must rely on for protection against encroachment and other factors, and if this project goes through, then it would be safe to say that there are no safeguards for residential areas. In other words, if one or two pieces of the future use, future land use plan are allowed to fall by the wayside, more significant pieces will follow suit, given enough time. The following questions are based on incongruencies with respect to the city's adopted land use plan. What is considered intrusive? What would be considered a high-traffic generating business if not Walmart, which is purported to be the highest-traffic generating business in Rapid City? How can no overnight camping be enforced if the store is allowed to be open 24 hours a day? What does the city plan to do to counteract the disruption to the neighborhood in order to comply with its vow to preserve quality of life? I also respectfully ask that the council, with the help of growth management, consider adopting a separate zoning designation for big-box commercial, as well as 24-hour establishments. The last future land use plans specific to South Robbinsdale was completed in 1999 and is deemed, the city deemed it a priority to maintain safety standards by issuing the following. Pedestrians, bicycles, and children's safety are a key concern of the Future Land Use Study Committee, as evidenced by the proposed bike path routes and the desire to locate high-traffic generating businesses out of the residential areas and along collector's streets and arterial streets, keeping truck traffic off local roads, and also address other many neighborhood safety measures. In 2008, the Future Land Use Plan states that the city's role in development is to preserve its quality of life, yet continue to attract new businesses and investments to the community. Can the city acknowledge that a 24-hour Walmart the size of three-foot ball fields will affect the quality of life that South Robbinsdale's homeowners enjoy? The 208 Plan states the city will maintain a commitment to the neighborhoods by implementing appropriate policies that preserve and improve the quality of the communities' established neighborhoods. We're here tonight for that commitment from this council. Charity emailed this to the, to the commission, and I think you probably have it in its entirety. There are some attachments to that. One of them is this Chesterfield Community Supercenter. Its hours are 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Also, I would ask this commission-- Also, I would ask this commission, Mr. Kroger, Mr. Weifenbach, Mrs. Olson, Mr. Chapman, Mayor Hanks, Alderman La Croix, Sam Quaker, Paddy, and Bill Walsh. Have you read this? Have you verified the information? If this thing does not work out, then I hope that you will enthusiastically work to correct the problem. I, I know that I can't ask you direct questions, so I'll take your silence as a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Deb Baker. Deb, for the record, if you please identify yourself, then the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Deb Baker, 325 Stumer Road. I had this thing all planned out to read to you guys tonight, but since about 4, 3:00 or 4:00 you aren't going to be here, I would respectfully ask for continuance. I think that we don't have a council that's going to be seated, and not all of you guys are going to be here when you guys vote on this. So, I would respectfully ask that you continue this meeting and not vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Duke Doring. Again, general, if you please identify yourself, then the floor is yours.
My name is Duke Doring. I live at 125 Savoy Circle. I'm one of the four closest houses to the proposed site. First, let me say that I'm in favor of building a new Walmart in the proposed location. Even though I live there and I'm one of the closest ones, I'm still in favor of it. And one of the reasons why is my belief is that something commercial is going to be built along that strip. We know what a Walmart is, and there's a lot of worse things that could be put there. So, we'll take the Walmart. The second thing that I'd like to mention is that when you view this proposed new building that was shown on the screen, it's a far cry from the Walmarts we're used to seeing. And I don't know whether it was the pressure from the residents, or from the planning commission, or maybe it's just an evolution of Walmart. But this is going to be a nice-looking building, if it goes forward. And third, let me speculate that once Walmart is built, that it will attract some other retail outlets. If you remember that movie with Kevin Costner in Field of Dreams where he said, "Build it and they will come," well, I don't have as much faith as Kevin Costner did about that. But let me say that I think that if you build the Walmart, that along that strip there, along Catron and along Fifth Street, there'll be a lot of other things come. Restaurants, maybe gas stations, maybe a car wash, any number of things that could be, that we could use out there. So, I think that the majority probably of people in Rapid City, I guess I can't talk to this either, but I think the majority of people in Rapid City want to see this Walmart. And hopefully, you people feel the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Donna Talty. Good evening, Donna. If you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
My name is Donabelle Talty. My husband Dean and I, we live on Wellington Drive, about a mile from the proposed site for the Walmart. We've lived in Rapid City for 21 years and came from ranch down east. I am not much of a speaker, but I really think that we do need Walmart on the south side. And I, I agree with Mr. Doring that if we don't get a Walmart, we might get something else a lot worse. And I think Walmart has done a great job of presenting their plans. And the traffic, there's a lot bigger cities than Rapid City that don't have any problems with stores like Walmart, with their signal lights and all that. So, I think Rapid City is on the right track to get Walmart in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. We also have a speaker request form from Ron Sasso. There again, Ron, if you'd identify yourself for the record, then the floor will be yours.
Ron Sasso, 219 San Marco Boulevard. And I just wanted to say that, having followed the Walmart discussion and seeing, first of all, what the planning commission has done has been outstanding, and then what Walmart is willing to do, I think, I don't know if we've thought about asking for a stadium to be built as well, but, but really, it does seem that they are going above and beyond to limit the impact on the community, and at the same time, they will be generating revenue for the community. I understand that there are people who are not supportive of it because of, because of where it is, and the reality is, something will go there. And it may not be a business that will be as willing to make changes to their lighting to, or be able to afford to do so. So, I think with, with taking into consideration everything that they are doing, I really would encourage approval of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Also have a speaker request form from Kathy Wold. There again, Kathy, if you just please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
I'm Kathy Wold, 320 Stumer Road, and please excuse my retainers. I want to address one point from the presenters that began the meeting tonight. They were talking about sightlines for the building, the night sky and service areas. And they stated that these things would not be visible to the neighbors. Actually, they would not be visible to the neighbors on Savoy Circle and the lower end of Enchantment. But if any of you have been to our neighborhood, you know that it goes up from there. And the majority of the houses in our neighborhood are elevated and will be subjected to all the sights and sounds of Walmart, including night lighting. We will see all of it. And then I have a prepared statement, which some of you received. "I'm having a difficult time understanding Rapid City's approach to growth management. At times, it seems illogical to me. In the front page of a June 25th Journal article, Mr. Hanks encouraged veterans to support the building of a VA nursing home on Highway 16. When I called growth management to find the exact location, I was told they hadn't heard of the project. Is this good planning when growth management isn't even aware that city land is being offered for development? I'm even more perplexed that Rapid City would consider placing a nursing home on Highway 16 with its roar of traffic and jingle of tourist dollars, and at the same time, consider placing a Walmart Supercenter with its crush of traffic and intrusive 24-hour lighting and noise into the quiet of a residential neighborhood, far from tourist routes. Wouldn't a nursing home in a residential setting and a Walmart Supercenter on a major commercial thoroughfare make much more sense? Wouldn't each building be much more compatible with its surroundings? I certainly think so. While doing research, I found what could be a compromised position on the current Walmart proposal. A Walmart Neighborhood," notice the name, "a Walmart Neighborhood Market, open from, say, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Walmartstores.com provides the following snapshot of the Neighborhood Market. Neighborhood markets offer a quick and convenient shopping experience for customers who need groceries, pharmaceuticals, and general merchandise. First opened in 1998, there are now 181 Neighborhood Markets, each employing about 95 associates. A typical store is about 42,000 square feet. Neighborhood markets feature a wide variety of products, including fresh produce, meat and dairy, frozen foods, dry goods and staples, health and beauty aids, stationery and paper goods, drive-through pharmacy, deli foods, bakery items, canned and packaged goods, condiments, spices, pet supplies, household supplies, and even a one-hour photo center. At 42,000 feet, the Neighborhood Market would be a much better fit logistically at the Stumer Road site, and would not so devastatingly impair livability for so many hard-working, tax-paying Rapid City citizens. Reducing the size of the proposed Walmart would also allow room for a park with playground and bike path, something much needed in our neighborhood. I hope the city council will take a reasonable and measured approach to growth management, one that gives consideration to the existing neighborhood and its residents. Therefore, I'm asking you either to move the Walmart Supercenter to a more appropriate location on a major commercial route, or to reduce the Supercenter to a Neighborhood Market that would fit much more harmoniously at Stumer Road. No matter how the Walmart issue is resolved, I ask the city council to stipulate reduced hours, businesses open no earlier than 7:00 a.m. and closing no later than 11:00 p.m. for commercial development at the Stumer Road site. To do otherwise would place an incredible burden in terms of traffic, noise, and lighting on residents of this neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Kathy. We also have a speaker request form from Jane Kirschenman. See how close I am. I think I'm close. Jane, if you would, please.
I'm Jane Kirschenman, and I don't live immediate, in the immediate area that would be affected by the Walmart. But just as a Rapid City citizen, I just don't feel that it's right that they would be placing a Supercenter in any residential area, just because of traffic and other issues that they're talking about with the lighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm down to Sean White. Did you wish to speak to any of them? Okay, very good. Marion Ward. There again, if anyone else wishes to speak, I would ask you to please fill out a speaker request form, get that turned in. There again, if you just identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Erin Ward. I live at 306 Stumer Road. Vicky's going to help me out here.
If you have some extra, what I'd ask you to do is just, if you want to put them over the media table over there, and then that way they'll be available to the public.
As I said, I reside at 306 Stumer Road. After reviewing the information that Mr. Green of THF Realty distributed on June 14th, I asked you, the city council who represents Rapid City, to reconsider the zoning request and the site location for a second Walmart. I am in agreement that Rapid City would benefit from a Walmart on the south side. However, without adequate evidence that a store of this magnitude can be successfully integrated into a neighborhood the caliber of Enchanted Hills and East Ridge Estates, I do not see it coordinating with Rapid City's long-range development plan for South Robinsdale. We requested evidence from Mr. Green showing examples of successful integration into neighborhoods such as ours, to which THF provided summaries of three different developments and their surrounding areas. Upon reviewing these examples, and based on the following facts, these stores have proven not to be a viable comparison. Also, because of their age, many of the reports hold no, excuse me, no relevance to requested examples. I begin my observations with Chesterfield Commons. Chesterfield Commons, located at 100 THF Boulevard Walmart, opened in 1999. This Walmart is not 24-hours, which brings to mind the question, can we limit the hours of a second Walmart store in Rapid City? As you can see, as you can see, the homes shown on the map are located across the highway and beyond what appears to be established lush vegetation, not within 1,000 feet of established private residences. Also note on the same map, the Chesterfield Commons has no direct access to this residential neighborhood, nor is it visible from these homes. Please take into consideration the demographic report, which was submitted, is 10-years-old and should not be considered an accurate summary of this area. And the fact that the average price and value of a home in Chesterfield is irrelevant. We're not addressing the entire city. As I move on to the next development, the shops at Laurel Hill, located on Highway K in O'Fallon, Missouri. Please note that the listed example properties are surrounding Target, not Walmart. Remember, Target is not open 24-hours a day. Although not shown on the maps provided by THF, here we are, the surrounding, the homes are surrounding Target. And though it's not shown on this map for the Laurel Hill development, the actual Walmart store is, I looked online, and according to the map online, the actual Walmart store is located a substantial distance further north on Highway K, and does not have any private residences near it. These example properties here have a market value of $183,000 to $232,000. Also, there's no direct access from the shops at Laurel Hill into the surrounding neighborhoods. The shops at Laurel Hill are hardly comparable to the proposed development of Black Hill Center with Walmart as their anchor store. This brings me to our last comparison. The Plaza at Gator Hole, where Walmart opened in 2004, is another example of a store that is not- This high-visibility, easy-access development is surrounded on three sides by commercial Although I fail to see the relevance of a ten-year-old, eleven-page demographic report or the significance of the real estate report for an entire city of Myrtle Beach, I did find Gator Hole to be the most interesting of the three development examples. In the THF publication, which we all received, or a lot of us received, the THF asks, or prints, "The user of the said brochure is advised to confirm all relevant information." So I took it upon myself to contact property owner Lucille, also known as Minnie Smith, On Friday, June 25th, 2010, I phoned her, and I explained to her the proposal made by Stone Ridge LLC, Dream Designs, and THF Realty to locate a 24-hour Walmart superstore in our neighborhood. With her permission, I have quoted her and respectfully asked that you, Rapid City council members, take this information under serious consideration when deciding the future of Rapid City and before locating Walmart in Black Hills Center rather than another more appropriate site. When I talked to Ms. Smith, my first question was, "Do you think the closeness of Walmart adds to or depreciates the value of your property?" She replied, "We have the beach to keep our property value up, not Walmart. They could put a garbage dump in, and our home would keep its value." I then stated, "The developer has graciously agreed to many accommodations to make this Walmart a good fit for the neighborhood," to which she said, "Ha! They promise you everything, but don't follow through. They have been going to close the walkway by our house for years, and it's still open." These are direct quotes. Ms. Smith was adamant, and I quote, "The traffic is the worst. Sometimes it becomes so congested, no one can get through." She brought this traffic issue up three different times during this conversation. I asked her, "Did Walmart provide adequate noise buffers?" To which she loudly replied, "Noise? They collect the garbage at four o'clock in the morning. You hear that old dumpster crash every night. I don't want to wake up to that." As we conclude, as we concluded this enlightening conversation, Minnie and I, she left me with You tell your council not to let them build it there. If I had a vote, I'd vote against it across the street. Good luck! With this quote and another plea, to please, please consider a different location for our second Walmart, I end my presentation tonight, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have a speaker request form from Scott Nash. There again, Mr. Nash, please identify yourself at the record, then the floor's yours, sir.
That's Scott Nash, 748 Fox Run Drive. And I just, it's been set through this meeting and the planning commission meeting, I heard a lot about traffic in 24/7 operations, and, you know, we're gonna have traffic in Rapid City. I live on Fox Run Drive, it wasn't very many years ago that Fifth Street didn't go beyond Minnesota. And so we've got a lot of traffic up by Fox Run now, coming in from Enchanted Hills and Sheridan Lake Road, wherever, but, you know, it's a minute or two you sit there and wait. It's a lot less time than what it takes me to drive to North Side or Rapid to shop. So, you know, I really look forward to seeing some shopping on the south side of town, and I think this has been a pretty well-thought-out plan. As far as the 24/7 operation in the neighborhood, I live just above the hospital, and that's a 24/7 operation. Sometimes there's sirens, sometimes there're helicopters, but it's palatable. We live there because we enjoy the neighborhood, and I don't think that this 24/7 operation is gonna be a devastating thing for this neighborhood, as many hurdles that Walmart has jumped through to try and accommodate this building being here. So I agree with the gentleman that said something much worse could be there, like casinos or pawn shops and adult video or whatever else comes into the strip malls. So I look forward to a larger-sized shopping center in the south side of Rapid. It will alleviate a lot of traffic going through Rapid to the north side of town, which probably will make traffic better throughout Rapid City as a result. Sure, there's gonna be some busy times, but, you know, relax for a minute or two, you get out there and get your chance to go. But I really look forward to a Walmart coming in, and I think they've done a good job, and I appreciate all the work the staff has done to make sure they did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Anyone else wishes to speak that has not spoken yet? Now, if the chair will look for motion to close the public comment, period. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion passes. We're on to item number one. Karen, if you'd please read that in, please.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from office commercial with planned commercial development to general commercial with the planned commercial development on property located northeast of the intersection of Stumer Road and Black Hills Boulevard. My motion would be to approve with revised legal description per the planning committee's commission's recommendation.
Karen, we have a motion and a second for approval, and both of the two stipulations with revised legal and per the planning commission's recommendations.
Correct.
Very good. Discussion on that motion. Everyone clear on the motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for our growth management director, Marsha Elkins.
Okay, go ahead, please.
And the question is, Marsha, is there a proposal for a tax increment financing district or an amendment to an existing tax increment financing district for this area?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins.
Staff has not received a formal application. There have been discussions about both options.
So the approval of this tonight does not imply a promise at all of a tax increment financing district?
Absolutely not.
And the other question that I have is, there have been several individuals who have contacted me, and one individual has spoken this tonight, that they find it concerning that this is being considered this week, and next week we have four new council members coming on board. Now, I support all nine items on tonight's agenda, but I think out of respect for the new council that's coming on board, and perhaps this is a question for the city attorney, is it possible to approve all nine of these items tonight with a notice of reconsideration which would allow a new council member who's taking office on Monday night to offer a motion of reconsideration in case there was an issue that was not addressed that they felt needed to be addressed? And with that being said, before you answer the question, I know there's a couple of the new council members and possible council members in the audience, and if they have concerns, I guess it's too late.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your rules of procedure certainly allow a member of the council to give notice of intent to ask for reconsideration. However, the motion for reconsideration has to be made by someone on the prevailing side of the vote, so a new member of the council will not vote on these items, therefore they could not make the motion for reconsideration. But you can certainly give notice of intent, and that's a part of your adopted procedures.
If the mayor will allow, then I would like to file notice of re, how do I do this?
We actually need to vote on the motion first, and then immediately after the motion, Alderman Quaker. If you'll make that motion, that would be the appropriate. Mr. Green.
Actually, it's not even a motion, it's just a statement that the aldermen is giving their notice of intent to seek reconsideration.
Very good, and then we'll place on the record.
And if I could just make one more statement, is that I'm doing this out of respect for the new council members coming on board. I support these nine items, but I think that that's only fair in case one of them has a concern. Thank you.
And I think Alderman Quaker, if you'd like to, my suggestion is just, you can make that statement as far as a general statement for all nine at one time, we don't need to do it for each one. Is that correct, Mr. Green? After the ninth item? Okay, very good. Anything else? Okay, very good, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had numerous requests to continue. I think that a reconsideration motion might work this as well. I appreciate Alderman Quaker's thought process to involve that, but I had a question for Mr. Green.
Which Mr. Green? Ours or the others?
Jason Green.
Okay, go ahead, please.
In lieu of, in light of some of the information, talking about property values and store hours and those types of things, and I'm not one person that likes to regulate store hours, but how would that play into the effect of this transaction? I mean, is it viable for the city council to say, "We'd like to see limited store hours in that store operation"?
Let's go to Jason.
Something that we have the legal authority to do.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not through the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. I think it might be possible to do it through the planned development, but I'd be very, I would ask that you give me the opportunity to do some research about that. I've got some concerns about the legality of the city limiting those hours for a general commercial operation, and I'd be happy to be prepared to answer that question on Monday night.
Would that be fair, Mr. Mayor, to have him be able to answer that question when we convene on the 7th of July?
And just, you know, it's Tuesday night, July 6th, because of the July 4th holiday, so it will be the 6th of July on a Tuesday. With that, Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get some of the questions answered for some of the citizens, it's hard for them to ask direct questions to the people involved, obviously with the way our forum is, and in light of that, I think that most of my questions have been answered, so I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I was gonna ask the very question that Sam was, is do we have ability to regulate hours? And it would certainly be helpful to understand how other communities have done this, or whether this is the choice of the company. I also am interested in knowing, I noticed Mr. Stalken's comments about the bollards and the permanency of that limited access. If there is a way to, I've heard, I've sat in on a number of those discussions, and there's been some question about what the legal, what would be the legal requirements to make that a permanent in place. I understand Stumer Road's citizens' concerns with traffic, and it does seem to me that this is a compromise that offers considerable limitations on, or it certainly would direct traffic in other ways, which I think is positive for this neighborhood. So that would be my question. I think that question has been slightly answered at some planning commission meetings that I attended, but I don't, it might be appropriate for this public meeting to have that a part of that answer provided. And I did hear the comments about the future land use, and having watched the future land use process move forward, like all processes that happen within the framework of municipality, they are subject to the influence of voters and all of the residential and commercial activity that occur in a community. And so I just tell you that my experience is, it's not over until it's over. Very few decisions that are made in the community are just absolute until check has been written or some final decision, but there's just no permanent, in my experience, very few permanent things, and so you can certainly, but I would be interested in getting the answer in regard to closing or limiting the access on the street, and in addition to understanding what the city is able to do in terms of managing the hours of a private business. I have to say, I haven't, since I've been on the council, I have certainly been party to some limitations for business, for commercial enterprise, where I've thought it was appropriate and where the council agreed with me. And, I mean, I think that is a function that has to be in consideration, but I also understand that the long-term health of a community is based on the ability of free enterprise to move forward in a way that is not limiting, and so I think that's another question where we're walking a line between a limitation and the ability to, of business to make decisions that are the best for them as well. So I have those two questions. I would hope that that would be a part of the answer. I'd also remind everyone that as this plan moves forward, all of them are subject to second reading.
No, not all.
Excuse me, the ordinance is in regard to rezones, all our first, you know, our first reading of an ordinance, and there is a lot of opportunity for continued dialogue, and I've certainly watched things changed as things moved through this process of public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We will have Jason come back, report on his research on the hours as far as the bollards, as far as the street closure. I'm gonna go to Marsha Elkins. That is a stipulation of the planned development, correct?
There is a stipulation of planned development to have that improvement installed. The questions that were asked at Planning Commission were whether or not in some manner that could be removed once that is installed, it is the city's property, it's part of the right-of-way, and under our ordinances, the public works director could have those removed, although our conversation has been that we would anticipate that would come forward to the council. The only way through conversations with Mr. Shad on this issue that we could identify to absolutely preclude that from happening would be to end up with some kind of vacation of the actual right-of-way and replacement of it with an emergency access-only easement and other utility easements. So that was the best option that we could come forward with.
Yep, thank you. Yep, Karen, you still have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you. I mean, I recognize that it's very important that there be access from emergency vehicles to this neighborhood. I mean, the last thing in the world I would ever support as a councilperson, or as even a citizen in this community, is making a neighborhood be dangerous by not being able to have our fire department, our ambulance service, and our PD be able to reach a neighborhood in a timely fashion. And so the bollard system, as I observe it and how it appears to be a compromise within the framework of this neighborhood, does seem to me a good compromise that offers the advantages of emergency vehicles balanced with the interests of the neighborhood in keeping their private, their roadway system somewhat less subjected to increased traffic.
Thank you. So to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for our attorney, Jason Green, and another question for our other Mr. Green. Jason, to your knowledge, have we ever required the hours for the other big-box retailers, Shop, Call, Target, and Kmart, have we ever dictated the hours of their businesses when they were first approved, to your knowledge?
Mr. Green.
To my knowledge, no. The only businesses that I can think of off the top of my head where hours are restricted are those that serve alcohol. are those that serve alcohol and adult-oriented businesses.
And my second question is, there was some talk about rebating of sales tax money. Was it ever done with the current Walmart? And is there any plan for that with the new Walmart?
Jason Green, city attorney.
I'm not aware of that being in place anywhere in Rapid City, and I don't believe it would be permissible to do that.
Thank you. I have a question for...there's also discussion about this neighborhood, Walmart Neighborhood Market. Are you familiar with that?
Mr. Green?
Is that an option here?
There you go. Give or try.
Thank you. Yes, I'm familiar with that type of operation. It's not what we're proposing here today.
Patty? Anything else? With that, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Robert Green.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Robert, in THF and Stone Ridge Development, and you had the map up earlier that basically showed Walmart and it showed the anchor store, and then there's the outlots. And my question is, is THF going to control the outlots also?
Yes, we would control the outlots. We govern our shopping centers, specifically the Walmart anchor and the retail, and then the out parcels with what's called, commonly called an ECR, which is an easement covenant restriction. It's a document that gets recorded in short form here in Pennington County, which governs how to maintain a shopping center, including trash, maintenance of the common area, which would potentially be the parking areas, both on the Walmart tract as well as on the shops tract, as well as on the detention pond, which would be shared. Now, one of the other things that you'll see in a document of this type is it gives the developer, THF in this case, the governing authority over plan approval. I know the city has their plan approval, but so do we, and what we do with that type of plan approval, it's the same approval that you govern with, is covers lighting, the building facade, rooftop units, all the same things we talked about relative to this Walmart project. And the purpose behind that is to integrate a uniform look and something that works together. So, yes, we do have one of those documents. It's a document that gets executed by Walmart and THF and covers the property throughout.
I appreciate expanding, because those are the questions I was going to ask, but the other one I was going to ask was, is there any particular businesses that you would eliminate from THF or Stone Ridge Development?
Adult and casinos?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. That was all I had for you, but I had a couple of other questions. It was mentioned earlier that this was an initial plan from growth management, and just take just a second or two to explain to the audience and everybody what we were meant by initial plan.
Let's go to Marsha Elkins, growth management director.
There's two steps to a planned development. There's the initial development plan. There's a list of information that's to be required at that point in time, and then final development plan. In essence, at that point in time, every piece of information that's necessary for a building permit has to be in place. So, should there be approval of the initial development plan with these stipulations, then the applicant would need to finalize construction drawings and bring those back through the final development plan process. Under the ordinances, those can be combined together, but in this case, they've elected to submit those separately.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, this plan, is this the point where the city's deciding whatever else is necessary to move forward at this particular point? I mean, it seems to be one of the areas that gets to be gray, at least for me, and when we go through these plans and the developers get to a particular point, and there's always a caveat that we say whatever else is necessary. So, is that where we're at today with this initial plan, and then will this plan come back again? Is that what I'm understanding?
Marsha?
Yes, this plan would come back as a final development plan to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's decision on it is also appealable to the council.
I just want to make sure everybody understands. Thank you, Marsha. But I had another question in reference to the detention pond and the flow rates and those types of things. Is that part of this plan? Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd pose that question.
Sure, let's go back to Marsha Elkins.
The detailed engineering calculations are information that are required as part of the final development plan, and I believe that's specified in the stipulations of approval. So, at this point in time, while there's a conceptual plan, we don't have the detailed drainage plan.
Because it's one of my biggest concerns over there with that detention pond, and I spent some time over there, looking at it a lot and understanding the flows and understanding that state historic flows have to be kept the same, but it doesn't ever talk about the amount of water that's going to drain down to those properties, down in the lower parts of those areas where there is no controlled flows and those types of things. So, I'm hoping that at some point, as this plan comes forward, we can have a detailed...I mean, I want to see how this is going to...how it's going to affect the people downstream from this detention pond, because it seems that, you know, we haven't done a real great job of controlling that. And we've got areas that we're going to spend millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars to try to repair after the fact, and I'm hoping that we've spent the time upfront to identify this and make sure that...so, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would ask that that be included maybe for July.
That level of detail would be provided with a final development plan when there's a complete engineering analysis of the drainage.
That's fair enough, so just to let you know, I'll be interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval with the revised legal and per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Is that correct, Amber? Okay. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, please.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from office commercial with a planned commercial development to a general commercial with a planned commercial development on property located north of Stumer Road and south of Fifth Street. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Are the lights not working? Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure that we don't come back with some kind of snafu, as Alderman Quaker had alluded to, that if we go through all nine of these, I don't want to come back here on the 6th of July and say that we didn't do each one of these items in particular to reconsider, so...
Mr. Green, I think Mr. Green indicated, as long as he gives notice at the end after we read all eight items in, we can...that can be stipulated that the notice to reconsider is applicable to all nine items.
That's correct, Mayor. As long as that notice is made before the end of the meeting for the adjournment, then any of the items or all of them can be included in that notification.
Thank you. Very good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, please.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from public to general commercial with a planned commercial development on land located north of Stumer Road and west of Fifth Street. My motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item four.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial with a planned commercial to general commercial with a planned commercial development, and, excuse me, I'll repeat that. A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for the THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial with a planned commercial development to public on property located at the intersection of Stumer Road and Fifth Street. My motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're in item number five, and I just draw the council's attention to the revised language. It should be in your folder. Just, that's what we'll be working off, if you would, please. With that, Karen, if you would.
First reading of ordinance 5600, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district on property located north of Stumer Road and south of Fifth Street. And my motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. There again, just a reminder, item six, that is on the updated agenda. Go ahead, Karen.
Item number six. First reading of ordinance 5601, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district on property located northeast of the intersection of Stumer Road and Black Hills Boulevard. My motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion seven. There again, we're still on the updated revised agenda. Item number seven, please.
First reading of ordinance 5602, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for rezoning from public district to general commercial district on property located north of Stumer Road and west of Fifth Street. My motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight on the updated agenda.
First reading of ordinance 5603, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for rezoning from general commercial district to public district on property located north of the intersection of Parkview Drive and Fifth Street on the west side of Fifth Street. My motion is for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to wait till the last item to make my comments, but...
Just so we do have an item number nine also.
Then I'll yield the floor. Wait for I...thank you.
Okay. Okay, the motion on the floor is for approval. Motion on the floor is for approval, dealing with item number eight. Seeing no lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine on the original agenda, please.
An appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Dream Design International Incorporated for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for a planned commercial development, initial development plan on property located at Stumer Road and Black Hills Boulevard. My motion is for approval with stipulations upon the effective date of the associated comprehensive plans and rezonings. My motion...yeah, that's my motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank you, Mayor. I was working off the second agenda when I brought that up, but I do want to make the comment, you know, this has been a long time coming with Walmart, over six years, and the hard work of a lot of people in the planning department, and a lot of meetings from different locations and so forth. And I just wanted to address some of the concerns that I've addressed with some...in some of those meetings, and I think they've addressed them. I mean, my parents moved over to Middle Ark Hills in 1978, right across the street from the Walmart when it was built off of La Crosse Street, and now with the Rushmore Crossing, and they're still there, and the planning department did a very good, excellent job of working with Rushmore Crossing and Walmart even way back then. You get more noise from the railroad than you do from the Walmart. And as far as the traffic, I'd address that, you know, when you talk about 24 hours, you know, you have your busy moments during the rush hour, but throughout the rest of the evenings, it slows down, and I've been in Walmart at 2:00 in the morning when I get off work and so forth, and it's not that disruptive, along with Sam's club being that close. But I just, I appreciate the work, hard work that they've done, and the impact to the surrounding community. I think they've worked hard, and I definitely understand some of the citizens' concerns of traffic and lighting and so forth, but I think they've did a very good job of addressing it. When you start talking about making retail and making things pedestrian-friendly, this is really the way they did do that. I mean, to be able to walk down to the store and have these conveniences without having to do a lot of the travel in a vehicle. I think they've addressed that, and that's one of the goals of Rapid City, is to make things pedestrian-friendly, bicycle, so we can have to use vehicles less. And I've heard over and over again, for this area and this south side town, as a lot of people have stated, that we'd like to have more restaurants and more things closer so you don't have to drive around all over town to get to them, and I think this is going to achieve it, and I think it's a very good start, and I just wanted to express my approval for this project since the very beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to file notice of reconsideration for items one through nine on tonight's agenda for the July 6, 2010 council meeting under the section of the agenda called reconsideration notices.
Yep, very good. There is no requirement to actually take a motion. Once an alderman actually gives notice of reconsideration, it automatically is forwarded to the next council meeting. So, with that, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for our city attorney, that's assuming all of these items are...will be on the next council agenda, or will they be forwarded to the next council meeting?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Each of these items will be on the July 6 council meeting under the notification of intent to seek reconsideration. So, if there's a motion to reconsider any of these items on July 6, they would be properly before the council for action. If there's no such motion, then those items will be deemed to have been approved tonight.
I guess my question, my question is, if Alderman Quaker had not filed a motion of intent, would these items be on the July 6 council agenda?
Jason Green, city attorney.
The only ones that would need further action would be the ordinances, and before you can take up second reading, you are required to hold a public hearing on 10 days' notice on those, so that those would have to be on July 19. So, in the absence of the notification, they would not be on the July 6 agenda.
Thank you.
Very good. Everyone clear on that? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I just re-alert everyone to the fact that the next meeting is July 6, and it is a Tuesday.
Yep.
So, I think it's important for the general public to know we're not meeting on a Monday night for this particular...and it's not unusual, it's following a holiday, a decision we made a number of years ago. So, everyone needs to know, it's Tuesday, July 6.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Seeing no further lights, there, look for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.